Please rise to pledge the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Florida, I think.
Clerk call the roll.
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln. Alderman Sahaski. Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Woodward.
Here.
The Honorable David Hawthorne.
Here.
All present except for First and Second Ward, Your Honor.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda? There are none. Item number one.
Resolve that the minutes of the common council meeting of July twenty-third, two thousand and two are hereby approved as per attached.
Motion.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas a meeting of the council held on July twenty-third, the clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for public hearing for this meeting of August sixth relative to a right-of-way proposal submitted by Amanda Gentry for the purpose of widening her driveway located at three oh-two Academy Street. Whereas a planning commission reviewed her proposal at their meeting of July eighth and recommended approval to the common council with the following stipulations: One, the driveway width is not to exceed twenty-four feet; Two, the driveway must have an impervious surface with a curb cup supervised by the Commissioner of the Department of Public Works; Three, the sidewalk is not to be moved or paved over. Mayor Stafford will declare the public hearing open.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this issue? Anyone on the council?
Not really.
You have knowledge of this?
Yes. Yep, I've been in contact with Mrs. Gentry all along the way, sent her a copy of the rules that she had to follow. I've talked to a couple of her neighbors who said they did get their notification in the mail, Dave is one of them. Talked to a guy who lives next door, he's cool with it, nobody's got a problem at all. The only catch, I guess, is that part of it has been dug up and the folks that dug the driveway broke a piece of sidewalk and I told them, well, a couple of years ago, I had it in front of the house and around the corner replaced and then last year I scraped it, scratched it out Third Street, so this year I'll just finish it all off and include one extra slab of sidewalk, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
So, I'll take care of that.
The stipulations, she was in agreement with those?
No objections that I'm aware of.
Okay.
All the neighbors are happy with it, so.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll run the motion.
Now therefore be resolved that the right-of-way request submitted by Amanda Gentry for the purpose of widening her driveway at three oh-two Academy Street is hereby approved with the stipulations as recommended by the planning commission as described above.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas in the meeting of the council held on Tuesday, July ninth, the clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for public auction to be held at this council meeting of August sixth at seven PM for a property auction for the property located at two seventeen Buffalo Street, Fulton, New York. This is subject to any easements, restrictions, and covenants, if any, of record affecting the described premises. Conditions of the sale shall be a minimum bid of five hundred dollars with bidding increments of one hundred dollars with a down payment of ten percent of the total bid at the time of the auction payable to the city clerk with the balance due to the city clerk thirty days after said auctions. Mayor Stafford will declare the bidding open.
Anyone interested in bidding on this property, please come forward and give your name and address.
Name is Aaron Bush, four seventy-two South Sixth Street.
What do you spell your first name, Aaron?
A.
Yes. B-U-S-H?
S-H.
S-H. Okay.
Wayne Harney.
And your address, sir?
Eighty-nine eighty-seven River Road, Phoenix, New York.
There are only the two bidders?
Well, you're aware this is a vacant lot, right? You're aware this is a vacant lot, right?
He's saying you're aware it's a vacant lot.
Yes, I am.
Okay, just checking.
H-A-R-N-E-Y.
Also, I should note for the parties that may make a difference, I don't know, that at least for this property, the city's prepared to convey by warranty deed, we actually have an abstract, we have clear title, this was property that was voluntarily conveyed to us by a gentleman who had some code problems. Same gentleman that we got three fifty-six South Fourth from. Whereas the other properties tonight, I believe, will be by quitclaim deed because those were acquired from Community Development Agency.
Okay, the minimum bid has been set at five hundred dollars. Do I hear five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Do I hear six hundred dollars?
Yes.
Seven hundred?
Yes.
Eight hundred?
Yes.
Nine hundred?
Yes.
Thousand?
Yes.
Eleven hundred?
Yes.
Twelve?
Yes.
Anybody want to go any further? All right, I'll ask just thirteen? No? Okay. We have a bid of twelve hundred dollars. Got the information for the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, bidding is now closed.
Now therefore be resolved that the bid of Mr. Wayne Harney, eighty-nine eighty-seven River Road, Phoenix, New York, in the amount of twelve hundred dollars is hereby accepted and awarded to Mr. Harney, being the best offer and in the best interest of the city of Fulton.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. That is passed. We'll take care of the down payments after the meeting. Mr. Harney? We'll take care of the down payments upon conclusion of the meeting.
Okay.
Next item.
The next property auction up for bid is six oh-nine Utica Street and is subject to the easements, restrictions, and covenants, if any, of record affecting the above described premises. Conditions of the sale shall be a minimum bid of fifty dollars, bidding increments of a hundred dollars with a down payment of ten percent. Total bid at the time of the auction payable to the city clerk, balance due in thirty days. Property will be conveyed to the successful bidder by quitclaim deed.
Anyone wishing to bid on the property at six oh-nine Utica Street, please come forward, give your name and address.
My name is Aaron Bush, four seventy-two South Sixth Street.
What do you spell your first name, Aaron?
A.
Yes. B-U-S-H?
S-H.
S-H. Okay.
Wayne Harney.
And your address, sir?
Eighty-nine eighty-seven River Road, Phoenix, New York.
There are only the two bidders?
Well, you're aware this is a vacant lot, right? You're aware this is a vacant lot, right?
He's saying you're aware it's a vacant lot.
Yes, I am.
Okay, just checking.
H-A-R-N-E-Y.
Also, I should note for the parties that may make a difference, I don't know, that at least for this property, the city's prepared to convey by warranty deed, we actually have an abstract, we have clear title, this was property that was voluntarily conveyed to us by a gentleman who had some code problems. Same gentleman that we got three fifty-six South Fourth from. Whereas the other properties tonight, I believe, will be by quitclaim deed because those were acquired from Community Development Agency.
Okay, the minimum bid has been set at five hundred dollars. Do I hear five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Do I hear six hundred dollars?
Yes.
Seven hundred?
Yes.
Eight hundred?
Yes.
Nine hundred?
Yes.
Thousand?
Yes.
Eleven hundred?
Yes.
Twelve?
Yes.
Anybody want to go any further? All right, I'll ask just thirteen? No? Okay. We have a bid of twelve hundred dollars. Got the information for the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, bidding is now closed.
Now therefore be resolved that the bid of Mr. Wayne Harney, eighty-nine eighty-seven River Road, Phoenix, New York, in the amount of twelve hundred dollars is hereby accepted and awarded to Mr. Harney, being the best offer and in the best interest of the city of Fulton.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. That is passed. We'll take care of the down payments after the meeting. Mr. Harney? We'll take care of the down payments upon conclusion of the meeting.
Okay.
Next item.
The next property auction up for bid is six oh-nine Utica Street and is subject to the easements, restrictions, and covenants, if any, of record affecting the above described premises. Conditions of the sale shall be a minimum bid of fifty dollars, bidding increments of a hundred dollars with a down payment of ten percent. Total bid at the time of the auction payable to the city clerk, balance due in thirty days. Property will be conveyed to the successful bidder by quitclaim deed.
Anyone wishing to bid on the property at six oh-nine Utica Street, please come forward, give your name and address.
That's what I was afraid of. That leads me to a question. I mean, I'd give you the fifty bucks for it because it's across the street from me, but with nobody bidding and the offer already made to the two neighbors for half of it for a dollar and they both said no, in fact Wayne, I figure you're one of them, are you just going to own this in perpetuity?
Yes.
What if somebody off the street came in to buy it? Would you have to put it out to auction again?
You don't have to, I mean, we've done this before where, especially after having an auction, if we have no bids and somebody comes forward and makes a legitimate offer, you can, even for a dollar, I suppose, you can, if you feel the property is no public benefit and it's the best interest of the city to sell it, probably you can sell it in your four loads.
Wayne, you sure you don't want?
No, sir.
It's right next to six oh-seven. Well, if you didn't want it for a dollar, you don't want to pay fifty for it? Okay. Just checking.
There are no one here tonight that is interested in bidding on this property?
Was this?
Let the record?
Well, I was just going to say that we know with the old church property in West First, we had no takers and then somebody came forward a year later and said, "I'm interested," but that's why we had the signs put up this time, so anybody should be aware.
Right, and the sign's been there, so.
Yeah, so that shouldn't happen, but who knows?
Okay.
Let the record show there were no bidders for this property.
Okay.
Next item.
The next property up for auction is one South Third Street. Again, subject to the easements, restrictions, and covenants, if any, of record affecting the above premises. Conditions shall be a minimum bid of five hundred dollars with bidding increments of a hundred dollars with a down payment of ten percent. The total bid at the time of auction, balance due thirty days to the city clerk after said auction. The council reserves the right to reject any and all bids and conveyance of the property to the successful bidder will be by quitclaim deed.
Anyone interested in bidding on the property at one South Third Street, please come forward, give your name and address.
David Ives, seven South Third Street.
Three oh-six on Ninety Street. Rose Anthony.
Three oh-six?
Yep.
Is there anyone else?
I've never been to an auction, so, or any of this, so I brought my friend in.
Okay.
I don't understand it.
The minimum bid on this property has been set at five hundred dollars. Does anyone offer the bid of five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Do I hear six hundred?
Six hundred.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Nine. Eleven? Thirteen?
You're making this easy.
Fifteen? Seventeen? What, eighteen? I'll go nineteen. Twenty-one? Twenty-three? Forty-five? Forty-seven? Forty-nine? Thirty-one? Thirty-three? Thirty-five? I'll go thirty-five. Thirty-seven? Thirty-nine? Well, let's make it easy, I'll go right up to five thousand. Fifty-two? Fifty-four? Fifty-eight? Six? Sixty? Sixty-two? Sixty-four? Sixty-six? Sixty-eight? Seven? I need parking. I don't have a driveway, you do. I don't have a driveway. Where do I go up to?
Who was? Was it seventy-one?
He was seventy-one. Where at seventy-one?
Seventy?
Seventy-one?
Mm-hmm.
We have a bid of seventy-one hundred dollars?
Seventy-two. Seventy-four? Seventy-six? Seventy-eight? I'm, I'm going to go up. I'm going to go way up. You guys are lucky tonight, aren't you?
This is, this has gone better than some we've had.
I just couldn't give one away for a buck.
When you don't have parking, you need parking and, um, you need parking.
We have, we have a bid of seventy-nine hundred?
That is?
We have a bid of seventy-nine hundred.
Eight? Eighty-two? Eighty-four? Eighty-six? Eighty-eight? Nine? Ninety-two? Ninety-four? Ninety-six? Ninety-eight? I. Yes, I go to ten.
Ten thousand?
Ten thousand two? Ten thousand four? Ten thousand five? Ten thousand six? Ten eight? Ten ten?
Just checking.
Ten twelve? Ten fourteen?
I'm at eleven-five.
Ten sixteen? Okay.
At ten thousand?
I think you figured out how to do it.
Ten fifteen is eleven-five, isn't it?
Ten thousand.
Eleven-five, ten sixteen?
Eleven thousand six hundred.
Eleven thousand six hundred.
Ten sixteen.
And I hope the city doesn't tell me what to do with that piece of property I just bought.
Can't be parking.
Okay?
Don't tell me what I can do with it. I'll tell you what to do with it.
Declare the, declare the bidding closed.
Now therefore be resolved that the bid of Rose Anthony.
Don't I have to give you something down?
Yeah, we'll do that after the meeting.
We're going to do this after the meeting, you'll have to stick around and see Joe after the meeting.
Okay.
Now therefore be resolved that the bid of Rose Anthony, in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred dollars, is hereby accepted and awarded to Rose Anthony, being the best author in the best interest of the city of Fulton.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
The next property up for auction is one twelve Lyons Street. All subject to the restrictions and covenants, if any, of record affecting the described premises. Conditions of the sale shall be a minimum bid of fifteen hundred dollars with bidding increments of a hundred dollars with a down payment of ten percent. Total bid at the time of the auction, balance due in thirty days to the city clerk after said auction. The council reserves the right to reject any and all bids and conveyance of the property to the successful bidder will be by quitclaim deed.
Motion. Next item. Resolve that the mayor, the city attorney, the city chamberlain, and the city clerk
be authorized to attend the Nikon Fall Training School September twenty-third through September twenty-seventh, two thousand and two, at Saratoga Springs, New York.
Motion.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Nancy Devers, thank you.
Next item.
Whereas chapter one oh-nine, article one, section one oh-nine dash one of the code of the city of Fulton establishes the hours of operation of playgrounds and recreation areas in the city of Fulton at eight AM to ten PM daily and authorizes the council by resolution to set other hours for specific purposes. Now therefore be it resolved that the hours of operation of the Bullhead Point Recreation Area are extended to twenty-four hours a day to provide optimum use of this recently upgraded facility by the general public.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second, but could you, could you read the memo from, or the, yeah, the memo from Mark Spahn, please?
Yes. Dear Mayor Stafford, concerning our discussion yesterday as to a possible change in the hours for Bullhead Point, I offer the following. Unlike other recreational areas in the city, this area is well-lit, located along a highway, high-traffic route, and is used at various hours for recreational activities. For instance, fishermen routinely fishing throughout the night, motorists stopping by at sunrise, and others accessing the North Bay Nature Trail via Bullhead Point prior to eight AM. These legitimate uses, although outside of the ten PM, eight AM timeframe, do not tend to promote criminal activity, but to the contrary are deterrent. Any person in this area at any hour creating a disturbance or damaging property can be dealt with under the state penal law. If problems were to develop in the future, that would warrant a time limitation, the circumstances could be reviewed for consideration of establishing such a prohibition. Under this, under the current circumstances as detailed above, I am not opposed to a twenty-four-hour status for this location. Sincerely, Mark A. Spahn, Chief of Police.
Thank you.
I have just a question. This does not affect the tourism center? Correct? As far as open twenty-four hours a day?
No, no, it's just the area.
The area.
Bullhead, pardon, Bullhead Point area.
No motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolve that the mayor be authorized to sign the court security agreement April first, two thousand and two, to March thirty-first, two thousand and three, as per attached.
I'll offer it.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
They're going to increase the amount they reimburse the city?
Yes.
From twelve-five to forty thousand?
Yes.
About time.
We are, because of the number of hours that we are providing the court security, instead of just one day a week, now it's about three different days a week. So that's why.
Does the forty thousand cover our cost?
They've agreed this, yes.
Okay. I'll move it.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolve that the mayor be authorized to sign the underground line easement agreement with Niagara Mohawk.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Should this resolution say with Niagara Mohawk and Alto? Because that's what the first paragraph of the agreement says.
We can add to that Niagara Mohawk and Alto, yes.
Yes, wouldn't be a bad idea.
And Alto.
We may be coming back and doing a similar thing with Mr. Fergus, but I, because he and I talked last week and we were going to do this, and then he would allow Niagara Mohawk and Alto as his agent, but meantime Niagara Mohawk sent us this, so we may be doing it quickly this week. This is in regards to the service coming into this building due to the required relocation of holes on the North Second Street, or South Second Street side for the development next door.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
We have two bidders on this piece of property. Is there anyone interested?
If you guys want to get together with your lawyer, I'm sure you could.
We've done that before. So both of you have adjoining property to this lot?
Right.
Yeah, that's, okay. Right, right, yes. Okay, we have two bidders for this property. The minimum bid has been set at five hundred dollars. Does anyone care to bid five hundred dollars?
I'll bid five.
You'll bid a five. Do I hear six?
Seven?
Do I hear eight? You, you don't want, you don't want a bid anymore? You're, you're all set? Well, whatever you do after somebody buys this property, that's completely up to, to both of you. We have a bid at this time of seven hundred dollars for that piece of property. Are there any other bids? Hearing none? Bidding is closed. Please fill in the blanks and read the motion.
Be resolved that the bid of Mr. Joseph Evinger.
Chilton, Chilton Evinger. Chilton.
J-L-T-O-N, Chilton Evinger, one-twelve Oak Street, Fulton, New York. In the amount of seven hundred dollars is hereby accepted and awarded to Mr. Evinger, being the best offer, in the best interest of the city of Fulton.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. For those of you that bid on the properties, I thank you very much. It's good to get these vacant properties back on the tax rolls. Next item.
Resolve that the mayor, the city attorney, the city chamberlain, and the city clerk be authorized to attend the Nikon Fall Training School September twenty-third through September twenty-seventh, two thousand and two, at Saratoga Springs, New York.
Motion?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that chapter one sixty-five of the vehicle and traffic ordinance be amended to read as follows. One sixty-five dash fifty-eight, schedule fourteen, parking prohibited at all times. Name a street, Academy Street, on the south side from a point of a hundred and forty-eight feet east of South Fourth Street, east for thirty-eight feet. Add one sixty-five dash sixty, schedule no standing. Name a street, South Fourth Street, on the west side from Pratt Street, north forty-five feet. South Fourth Street, on the west side from Pratt Street, south forty-five street, feet. And Pratt Street, north side, from South Fourth Street, west for thirty feet.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Nancy Devers, thanks you.
Next item.
Res- chapter one oh nine, article one, section one oh nine dash one of the code of the city of Fulton, establishes the hours of operation of playgrounds and recreation areas in the city of Fulton at eight AM to ten PM, daily, and authorizes the council by resolution to set other hours for specific purposes. Now therefore be it resolved that the hours of operation of the Bullhead Point Recreation Area are extended to twenty-four hours a day to provide optimum use of this recently upgraded facility by the general public.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second, but could you, could you read the memo from, or the, the memo from, uh, Mark Bond, please?
Yes. Dear Mayor Stafford, concerning our discussion yesterday as to a possible change in the hours of, for Bullhead Point, I offer the following. Unlike other recreational areas in the city, this area is well-lit, located along a highway, high-traffic route, and is used at various hours for recreational activities. For instance, fishermen routinely fishing throughout the night, motorists stopping by at sunrise, and others accessing the North Bay Nature Trail via Bullhead Point prior to eight AM. These legitimate uses, although outside of the ten PM, eight AM timeframe, do not tend to promote criminal activity, but to the contrary are deterrent. Any person in this area at any hour creating a disturbance or damaging property can be dealt with under the state penal law. If problems were to develop in the future, that would warrant a time limitation. The circumstances could be reviewed for consideration of establishing such a prohibition. Under this, under the current circumstances as detailed above, I am not opposed to a, to twenty-four hour status for this location. Sincerely, Mark A. Spawn, Chief of Police.
Thank you.
I have, I have just a question. This does not affect the tourism center? Correct? As far as open twenty-four hours a day?
No, no, it's just the area.
The area.
Bullhead, Bullhead Point area.
Motion, second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolve that the mayor be authorized to sign the court security agreement, April first, two thousand and two, to March thirty-first, two thousand and three, as per attached.
I'll offer it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
They're going to increase the amount they reimburse the city?
Yes.
From twelve-five to forty thousand?
Yes.
About time.
We are, because of the, a number of hours that, uh, we are providing the court security, instead of just one day a week, now it's about three different days a week. So that's why...
Does the forty thousand cover our cost?
They've agreed this, yes.
Okay.
I'll move it.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that the mayor be authorized to sign the underground line easement agreement with Niagara Mohawk.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Should this resolution say with Niagara Mohawk and Alto? Because that's what the first paragraph of the agreement says.
We can add to that Niagara Mohawk and Alto, yes.
Yes, wouldn't be a bad idea.
And Alto.
We may be coming back and doing a similar thing with Mr. Fergus, but he, because he and I talked last week and we were going to do this, and then he would allow Niagara Mohawk and Alto as his agent, but meantime Niagara Mohawk sent us this, so we may be
This is in regards to the service coming into this building, due to the, uh, required relocation of holes on the North Second Street, or South Second Street side for the, uh, development next door. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there anyone in the audience that has any business to bring before the council? Please come forward, state your name.
My name is William Knoll. My address is five oh three Oneida Street. Um, I got here a little late. Did you, um, auction off, uh, the property next to mine?
Which one?
I think it'd be five oh five or five oh seven Oneida.
Oneida? No.
Nothing on Oneida?
No. Well, just one, one, one South Third.
No, mine's fifth and Oneida. I live on the corner of, uh, I was told that they were going to auction off, they had ripped down, the city had taken the property next to me, and they ripped down a small house that was there. And I was interested in that property there, but I was told it was going to go for auction tonight.
No, but we'll check and make sure that goes on the next auction. That was one that, uh, that CDA got, wasn't it?
Has that been conveyed yet, Sheriff?
Raleigh went through and ripped, when Raleigh went through and ripped down a bunch of houses.
That, that one hasn't been, that property hasn't been transferred to us yet.
Okay.
That wasn't on the list.
Okay, I was told it was, so I, I got here a little late, so I thought I'd ask.
Okay. We, we will, we will keep watching the paper because we are going to have more auctions as, as the, uh, the properties get signed over to us. Certainly. Is there, uh, any, any of the aldermen have any business to bring before the, uh, council? Little western?
I just have, uh, once again, a request. Uh, we, we continue to have problems with geese in the recreational park areas. It's a problem. We have posted signs. We do not want the public to feed the geese. Uh, they're, they're pretty to look at, but they also leave behind some, uh, some droppings that are extremely, um, offensive and, uh, and not, uh, from a health point stand, from a health point, it's not hygienically good. Uh, we have a summer program and it's difficult. Uh, they, they want to go outside and there's a lot of areas that they really can't go outside. It affects the different fields down there, the softball field, and so I guess I'm talking to the media if they can somehow, once again, get the point across that, we want to discourage people from feeding the geese.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Cavallaro?
I'm all set.
Alderman Thompson?
Thank you now.
Hold on, what were you?
Just one thing, uh, how are we coming on the other properties, David? We seem to have some success.
Yeah, there's a little. And I've had a lot of, um, inquiries that you guys don't even know about, I know, so we'll get those shortly. We can do the same thing. In effect, maybe the ones that didn't sell tonight, if we add those as part of one big fell swoop, you might have a lot more interest, because I assume when you were talking about three dozen properties, you might be advertising open much larger areas.
Well, I've had people ask, well, some of the ones, some of them might be interesting, some of them. Any money, I know someone, we have a problem with someone.
Some of them are worth, are going to be worth selling, I'm sure.
Do we have an ETA on the Fulton Mall property too?
That's part of it. Few months here.
Okay.
We're close.
That's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk has, uh, an announcement he wants to make. He wants to get as many people as possible, so that's why he's going to do it at this meeting.
Uh, if the press could get something into the paper relative to what's coming, uh, on this year, sporting licenses now are going to be sold. The initial date that the DEC has set has been August nineteenth, but it could go as far as maybe as late as August thirty-first. The reason for that is, uh, the state has provided the, all municipalities with, with a computer and software called a decals program. What this decals pro- program will enable everyone to do is they will be able to come in and get a hunting license, bow hunting, whatever type of license they want. And when it's printed out, there's no more stamps or anything. The only thing you're going to get is like a three-by-five card, which will include the license, the tag, and everything. That's the good news. They provided the computer, the software, and they provided us a scanner. Uh, what I want the public to be aware of is they're going to have to be extremely patient, uh, not only here, but other municipalities, because the initial faves of this will be input by computer. In other words, if somebody comes in now pri- prior to this new program, they would fill out a hunting license. We would issue them stamps. They would sign the back of the stamps. We would issue them a back tag. Uh, they would pay the money and the way they'd go. It's, there are going to be no more stamps. There is not going to be filling out any paperwork. It's all going to be done by computer. Once the initial input for this year is done, they tell me what is going to happen is a hunter will be able to come in. We will be able to take his driver's license. We be, we will be able to scan that, and we'll update the information automatically on the computer. Therefore, the only thing that we would have to change would be, uh, any address changes or anything other than that. So what I want the public to know is they're going to have to be extremely patient, not only in our city, but other cities, because one, they provided us only one computer. Uh, only one person can work at the station at a time, and the initial input is going to take a little bit longer than it did before. So, uh, I, I just wanted you to please get that out because uh, we have had instances where we've had people lined up three-deep. Uh, and I just want to make the public aware.
Word to the wise is sufficient. Don't wait till the last minute if you're going to get a hunt license.
Right. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation.
I'll offer that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.